Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Oh, this is Renee.
Hello.
It's a beautiful day for it. Nice, even though it's my head and everything, but it's... Oh, no.
I'd like to call the work session for the March 12th, 2024, Launch City Council Word. We've got Mayor Protan on line. Everyone else is present. So, order of business. Approval of the minutes. You have the minutes for the February 27 regular session, work session, executive session. Here's the latest one, executive session for the April. Any questions, discussions? Here none. We have a presentation, a proclamation for ovarian cancer going into new business.
Mr. Mayor, can I request that presentation be postponed to a different council that population?
Okay. One closer to September. Approval of new business. City manager's recommendation to move forward with Twist as the primary sound company for the district ham theater, primary secondary sound system, a funding source from SWAS 2021, allocated for community improvement, as well as to grant money to the mayor to execute related documents. Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, citizens. This was a bid that was placed out on the BidNet platform. The ROP specified the need for both primary and secondary sound arrays. We only received one bid, but the bid that we did receive was from Twist, who was very involved in collaborating closely with us and asking questions. While we don't have the approval for the actual ham theater yet, the construction, it's imperative that we have these folks involved from the preliminary part of it. They'll work with the construction contractor, the architects. They do the sound arrays. They also do the voice systems for speakers, building and fabricating, the stands and everything else with it. We have an audit attached to that for BidNet. It includes a large array for accommodating our large city events, as well as a smaller array that will handle between 50 to 100 people without having to roll out all the big speakers. They also will set up the lights and some other things as far as the green rooms. Their bid amount, if you look over on their bid, it includes a number of things as far as layouts and everything else. The total amount for the bid is $371,379.23, and that includes all the equipment. And my recommendation is that we go with Twist.
Questions? Uh, this side.
I currently no question.
Mr. Quan.
So, this is for speaker only, no, no, no screen?
It doesn't include the LED screens, but it does have the speakers as a customer, a custom software that goes with it. It's a kind of like you've seen at the other events we've been where they have iPad controls on it, but it does not include the LED speakers. It does include the small speaker arrays. It can be a zone sound system too, which is why I was glad they were involved in the, with the preliminary design of it and the discussions. Instead of having the loud speakers, big speakers from the front projecting out towards the back, we'll be able to zone that sound and mitigate the sound noise complaints across the interstate from our events. So, it'll be more zone, kind of like an HVAC system where the sound will be balanced out from the, from the front to the middle to the back section, and so you won't have to have the loud speakers barking out the base and anything else with just the front.
So, being, being outside, being outdoor, the sun and playing on that, do we, I mean, offer, do we offer any kind of warranty or any package?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, they do. And with this, one of the things with the voice system, the big speakers will come down and we'll be storing them. We'll be leaving them hanging out in the weather. You could, I'd be the first to vandals of that and weather.
After event, each event, we would take them out.
Yes, and that's why they're going to be, the voice system will be a very simple hook and hoist, but it's also very strategically placed as far as where the speakers will go up on those panels.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wayne.
Um, will it include a training tool?
Yes, ma'am, it will. It's got training included in that software, as well as support throughout the, the period of time, like a three-year period of time where they'll come out and support anything else and any of the warranty information. All that will go back through them to be replaced if any of the equipment or anything needs to be replaced.
And we did open the bidding public.
Yes, ma'am, we did. We did an ROP, it was posted on our website on BidNet. BidNet is one of the programs we use for the bids. It goes out publicly, but sends it out so roughly, I think in this case it was about 275 potential bidders. We got one return on that, so can make a bid.
Thank you.
Ms. Dean.
Um, completion, starting completion.
Well, that's kind of depending on, on the construction of the ham theater itself. But once they, they'll be step to step with them. They'll go ahead and start applications, the speaker stands, they know the height enough of the plans that we do have. Once they can incorporate that into actual construction, it'll be, it will dovetail right along with the construction time. Because they'll go ahead and acquire the information, the equipment rather, ahead of time so that we can lock in the prices that they gave us.
Clearly, we have clearly have any, you have pictures, anything like that, we can visualize.
I, I do, I will have to, I'll provide this.
That's okay.
I didn't come prepared, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, we do have a speaker array, kind of the way that, what they work off of that, which is, they'll show you the, some of the system components and everything.
Is it going to work, Paul? No, no, we want to hear it for the record, go ahead. Yes, no?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Absolutely sure. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Baker. I have number two, approval of city manager's recommendation to move forward with Wilson Maintenance as the HVAC company for the Ballin Convention Center and running from SWAS 21, general funds running his public works buildings, operating and executing documents. Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir, this was a bid process that we did on the informal portion because this is now the new public works construction project bid that requires a sealed bids. We reached out to a number of different suppliers and AC, HVAC contractors through the area. Some that we used before. We've got a total of three bids. As you all recall, we have wrestled with the dilemma of HVAC at the Convention Center for quite some time. We had some really good bids from, eh, from a couple of companies that were anywhere from 2.4 million dollars to 4 million dollars. This was a little bit more volatile. The change in plan was we would kind of piecemeal into the HVAC system. It's not all that hot in there, it's more like a humidity and everything else that prohibits us using it during the summertime. A total of eight units, eight to nine units is what we're kind of projecting for. This is for four 25-ton units, so it would be arrayed on the side of where we set up the stage for like the Lunar New Year and down the long bathroom. Using some of the existing ductwork in the back and just do a straight drop on some of the others, just to kind of get the air in there and cool it down. So, this is going to be a combination up on a roof where they replace the units. It's empty up there now, but you need curving. You need to have the gas signs up there and electrical and stuff there, so we'll be putting this up there utilizing the gas for the heat and air on that, on these particular components. All four of those, the three bids rather are on here. Wilson's maintenance came in at $255,600. That would be my suggestion. That includes having a professional roofer, having a curving put in, installation, startup, and de-crane will also go along with lifting those units up onto the roof.
Questions? Ms. Agnes.
So, what kind of timeline are we talking about for this part, particular piece to the A B B song?
They will start pending approval, they will be able to start tomorrow on a curving. The unit should be in, I believe they said in four to six weeks.
Three to four.
Three to four weeks, I'm sorry, which is much better than anything else we've had. So, actually, we would be able to utilize this during the summertime.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Quan.
So, so what is the $250,000 including? I mean, how many units?
It's four units for us. It's a 25-ton. It includes the curving, it includes the installation, the startup, the warranty and everything else for the first year. It includes thermostats, it includes the 10-foot duct drop that comes down from the other units and a tie into the existing ductwork on the backside.
So, we're going to have a, how to tell them?
Yes, sir. We think that may be pretty good out there to start this up. So, that may actually, as we build off of those four units, we'll be able to see how many we actually need. But this, this actually gets us started in that right direction.
You were saying that we have enough power capability up there?
Yes.
Then, you know, with 100 ton, the roof going to handle it?
Oh, yes, we've already done the engineering on that. When we were talking to the other companies, we, I had the engineers come in and look at that. They'll straddle the cross beams and they don't believe, when we get up there, we'll find out, but we don't believe that they're going to have any cross welding on it. If they do, they're just going to cross weld it, set it up there, but it should sit on the actual beam itself with no problem. Follow me, start with engineering.
I think we'd be cheap if we'd be standing away up there a little bit.
I can't get him up on the roof because then we'd pull the ladder up.
Christine.
Will this cover the T-1?
This will not cover the T-1. However, we do have an option for the T-1, not probably very too late. We're not sure what we're going to put in that one, so we think a 20 to a 10 would probably work in that one, given we're ready to put in the kitchen area and also for the nightmare for the prospective plans we have, but it would be a lot less essential. And this actually breaks down the bid for you all here as far as what it is on that individual cost. I think it's around, I want to see, I believe it's around $65,000 for each unit. We have, the reason I would consider doing that one ahead of time is because we have had some demands and requests of the rules on, and it seems to be, everybody wants to rent it. Of course, once we put the HVAC in front, nobody want to rent it, but right now they do want to rent it, so I think it'd be good for us to go and have pleasant balances out the AC on the Marrow Center itself.
Ms., Ms. Wayne.
The trans, the, trans, I think that's how I pronounce it, the, trans, the AC unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it sustainability on mission?
Well, I was the first to say, I don't think fails a lot, but train and carrier is supposed to be some of the best.
Then they are, those, those are your two top brands.
Yeah.
Basically, the, the EPA regulations, they're all going to be all those current criteria, you're going to be, that's at least the minimum required by law, which is sustainable and sustainable for example, so they won't subtilize for that one, but we're just installing it, but it is very, it would be fun.
Thank you.
So, so as far as, I'm looking at the H5, you have as far as noise level now?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be inside the building? You're not going to be able to hear any of that like we hear here.
Oh, I mean, you know, the roofs are 25 feet tall basically, but you'll hear, you may hear a starter point a few years, but the noise, I don't think, you may hear a little rumbling, but...
The installation matters, all right? So, you know, like this one, if you can hear this air conditioning system, you can, if you actually think about it, but generally, this would not be obnoxious enough where you would pay attention to it until I asked it.
What is your sound system?
So, I just noticed one of these here, it says 500. Hurst, so is that, what particular, is that one particular unit?
It's not the unit that we're going with, but I mean, they're probably similar dispositions as far as the sound, because the sound member is up on the roof and it's going to be on the exterior of it, it's a lot louder than what we get on the interior of it. And there is a thick, that roof has got a pretty thick padding to it, so I doubt we'll be able to hear much other than the starter and shutdown. Yep, that one.
Sounds good.
Is it?
Executive session, you want to back down?
Uh, we, if you want to do, we can do it.
No, so go ahead. Didn't count stuff, go ahead.
We did have, the police department's going to do a presentation, if you'd like them to do it in here.
Go ahead, what you got? You're the boss.
Listen here, y'all got the fire going, I don't know what you got on it, just tell them what I've got.
You're the boss.
Yeah, we're ready. Detective Morel and Lieutenant Murphy, we're going to go ahead and do a presentation. We're on some of the training. Chief is going to introduce that training that's going on for the usage of the Marrow Center.
All right. I'd like Lieutenant Mark to come up first to tell you about all the training that we've been doing, where I now currently have Desert Snow there, which is one of the premier narcotics, locating, training for people to work in highway interdiction mostly, but it pertains to anywhere. It basically talks about hidden compartments on the vehicle, where to locate them and everything, and he's going to tell you about the training that we have coming up, and then I have to introduce Detective Morel about something else.
I've got a little power call to you. As the chief said, I'm heading up to Training Division. Just give me a moment. What we're going is, we're trying to look at career training areas for all metro Atlanta and Georgia. And what we're setting up is we're getting a little more training, you know, hosting different courses, which are bringing a lot more people into the city, and it's also bringing revenue into the city for people staying in hotels, buying the food, whatever here and such. The questions that we're going to ask, we're, what was, we're bringing the training classes, but how's it benefit the city? How's it benefit the department? What's the long-term goal for the Marrow Police Department's Training Division? Benefits of the city, as I said, brings in revenue, potential revenue. We have more people coming here for training, seeing the Marrow Center, seeing the businesses we have here, and their, their by some credit bond stuff we have, to bring more repeat business back. The students, instructors, either local businesses, either state hotels, which are bringing revenue for our businesses, brings, eventually brings revenue to the city. And introduce the Marrow Center, local businesses, giving to the clients, and also a way to recruit, uh, recruitment tools for this police department. We've got these officers coming here, which their departments don't have half of what we have, and they're like, hey, you'll hire? Benefits of the Marrow Police Department brings expensive and hard-to-get training to us. We always get free seats to train, otherwise, the whole department, thousands of dollars, but this is, we have to pay for, for the seats that we do get, like the Desert Snow course, it's $700 per seat, and we have two, two, it's, that's $1,400 to save right there. But also, we have to pay for lodging and the gas to get out there and for the, for the meat, whatever, it's saving a lot of money for us. And educate the officers, making you more valuable, and get officers some information they can pass on to the rest of the department. And she was talking about the Desert Snow, that interdiction training is invaluable. Got most of these two officers we have in the class now, they're through, they can pass on the information to the other, the other officers, we'll go make more stops for our interdiction staff, we'll make, you know, get the drugs out the street. And the goal of the Training Division is to make the city a marrow, the premier location to attend training, and a wide variety of courses to attend. We can reduce the opportunities for officers, further their education to better themselves. We're going to align the Marrow PD Training Division with GIPSEC, which is Georgia Public Safety Training Center, and FLETC, which is Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. We're going to start hosting a lot of their courses, which is going to bring more students to the area. It's also going to keep us, our students, from having to go down and pick classes, you know, hour and a half away. All right, we're currently hosting two courses in Marrow Center. We have Desert Snow, and we also have the Federal Law enforcement Training Centers, Use of Force Instructor Course, which is a very important course for a lot of our officers have, I got two officers in each course. Desert Snow, this course consists of one day, one day classroom, two days of interactive vehicle searches. Classroom course teaches students how to identify possible smugglers, clues to smuggling, how to attain the consent to search vehicles, teaches, gives the officers tools they need. Now, they, they want to be introduced initially, how to, again, they can sit with, they discuss search of seizure laws, demonstrate the testing and interview techniques. Desert Snow taught by seasoned law enforcement officers altogether, combines over 100 years of law enforcement experience in interdiction, I just lost her enforcement experience only. All right, the course explores students' hidden compartments in vehicles, the tricks of the trade. As you can see here, you have a tire that's been cut away, showing how they do it, they strap the cocaine bundles inside the tire, and then they inflate the tire, put it on the car and drive down the road. Most people don't see it, they have mufflers, gas cans, seats. And then just up right here in the trailer edge, this is my favorite one, when I saw, there's actually a half a kilo of cocaine in that trailer edge.
Wow.
All right, our FLETC Use of Force Instructor Course, the, it's a federal program. It's designed to get students' knowledge, skills, necessary to develop and implement, training lessons for use of force instruction for our police officers, which is very important in our job. These officers, what they can, can't do, teaches them the law, and keeps us out of trouble, keeps the city out of trouble. Students can build lesson plans, the training scenarios, the training drills will often be in the course. Students will have the ability to teach back to their departments, to actually their officers. So, once we get them trained out, they're going to come back and teach the officers. And so far this year, in February, we hosted Georgia Resilience Program. We had 33 students, the one instructor in attendance. About half of those students were from out of the area, in the area hotels, including the instructor. In March, now, we have Desert Snow, FLETC, we have a total of 61 students in two classes and 14 instructors, and they're all staying at the web. I'd say 60% of them are staying in Marrow. In April, we have the Georgia Gang Investors Basic and Intermedia Courses, it's a two-day course. We have 30 students each day and three instructors each day, and that's going to bring students from all around Marrow. We have GIPSEC Speed Protection Course, two-day course, 30 students, two instructors, that's going to be here. We have Blood Armors Course, which is a one-day class, and most people are driving in the night before and spend the night. That's going to have approximately 30 students and one instructor in attendance. The Perk Trends and Auto Theft, which is a one-day course, 30-plus students and three instructors. In May, we're doing the Tapestry Human Trafficking Seminar, expecting 60 to 70 students, with two instructors coming in, that's going to be open up to the public as well as law enforcement. It's going to be all matter of the Marrow Center, we're going to have a good education on the human trafficking problem that Georgia's facing, and of course, the whole nation's facing. Teach us how to deal with the problem and talk to the victims of it. Then, at the end of May, we have the five-day AAR, Training the Trainer Course, which is active shooter training. And what we have for that is, it's, they teach us how to teach the other students. That's the training prayer. It's, uh, this one right here actually had a fight to beat, this one. I went up against 15 different other agencies in Georgia, tried to beat this horse, and work chose us. And I offered, showed them what we had, and they loved it. All right, in June, we have three-day Blue to Bold Advanced Search Force, Search of Seizure Forces, we have 30 students in that and two instructors. In July, we had a two-day Guardian Leadership Course, we have 30 students and two instructors for that one as well. That's going to help a lot of our leaders, give them this, give them business, law enforcement, whatever, it helps them. In August, we're hosting K9 Guardian Three-Day Training Course, having case law search of seizures and K9 training certifications. In November, we've got a five-day Cold Armors Course, 30 students and two instructors. So, all these different instructors, all these different students can be staying in different hotels, spending money here in the city. In Outstraining, I've developed a rifle, patrol rifle course, and a shotgun skills course, and just recently got that post-approved and recognized, which that means the officers can take these certification courses here in Marrow now, they don't have to go out, out, pay them elsewhere. That's going to enable us to keep our officers, get them all certified, and that'll help the city. These will be courses to be held in May, bringing outside agencies and students as well.
You got any questions? Ms. Agnes.
No question, but thank you for the information and the intentional effort to do the training here in the city. That's a great idea, great job.
Thank you. Mr. Quan.
Thank you. Very impressive.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
For the traffic one, for public attendants.
The, the human trafficking, the tapestry, yes, ma'am, that's a seminar, it's...
Let us know what that's going to be?
Yes, ma'am, I'll send you a, it's, uh, basically, it's teaching you how the, the science of human trafficking and how to approach a trauma-ridden victim.
Ms. Wayne.
I don't have a question, but just comment. Thank you for the thorough presentation, and I'm very glad that this would impact our tourism and our local, remote local businesses in town too. And I'm glad that we get some of the training that I realize that all the training is, where it used to be with Cal Convention Center and Tyler Perry, so I'm glad that City Marrow is in the game too.
Okay, we're definitely in the game, we're going to get bigger and better.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job.
I have a little bit to add to that. Lieutenant Park has been quite modest. Getting a post-certified class recognized in firearms is very difficult. He would do a great thing to get this done. Thinking he can teach a post-certified class and have it recognized by post is something to be processed, and he's done a lot of hard work, and we're very appreciative. The second thing that I want to bring up is the burglary detail. On January 27th, we had our second run of burglaries in the area. There was five stores that were burglarized, and we said enough is enough. We sat down that weekend, I sat down with the city manager, and I said, we're going to start a burglary detail starting tonight, and we rallied the troops, and we did 36 nights of coverage, with four extra people working every night. People volunteered their time, all the command staff came in and worked. Traffic unit uprooted their lives and switched to morning watch, told the families they're going to be gone for the next 36 days, and, and just did a 180, and did whatever was necessary to give 100% coverage in the city of Marrow. We put in 1,080 man-hours over 36 days, just on burglary patrol. Happy to say that there was no burglaries during that time, because we not only had the regular shift working, we had four additional officers out there just doing nothing but riding businesses. In addition to that, our CID unit stood tall and coordinated meetings with other jurisdictions in the metro area. They spearheaded it, they came up with all the information, and they were interviewing, getting multiple arrests, and I know that Detective Morel explained that to you, but prior to that, I'd like to have two members of the traffic unit come in here and be recognized for the hours that they did, Officer Lamb and Officer Birch. Want to up here, please? Like I said, we phoned them on Saturday, and we said, your schedule's out, out the window, this is what we need you to do, you're a specialty unit, this is a special job, and they give you a bad night. They changed their schedules and came in to this, I'm really proud of them. I mean, the command staff, like I said, came in, and those are free hours, by the way, because the command staffs are all satellite vehicles, so everybody made the sacrifice in the department. I'm talking about from officers all the way to, to myself. I came and worked burglary patrol, I'm no different than anybody else. I'm really proud of what the department did, and I'm super proud of what Detective Morel was able to accomplish, and I will let her explain that stuff to you.
When you see these two guys like that, it makes you almost want to slow down right now, doesn't it?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Our traffic unit is actually composed of three other people, but due to scheduling and everything, they couldn't be here, but the traffic unit really stood tall, and that's why I called in to come in here. Officer Porch himself volunteered for numerous times in addition to what he was scheduled to work, and Lamb didn't get to see his wife for 36 days.
Am I good?
We're good. I was stalling for time while you were...
So, my name's Detective Morel, I'm in the Criminal Investigations Division with Marrow. As you know, or may not know, on January 20th, we had six of our businesses burglarized. Most of them were in the shops of Marrow, and then two of them were over here in Southlake Festival Plaza. Fortunately for us, Lieutenant Todd kind of deterred them responding to the first set of burglaries, because he went right through the plaza not even knowing they were there, and they jumped in the car and they drove away. So, I have this video, you can watch, of pretty much our best footage, I think, that we ended up getting from these burglaries, if you'll play.
Wait a minute.
Maybe. Yeah, so you see the car in the top right pull-up there.
And they just don't have a lock in there, right? Domino's isn't exactly in a place you have.
Ours didn't have a lock. I didn't include it, but they hate different businesses around the metro area, and I know at these two places, two separate places, they've got seventeen thousand dollars apiece from each business. So it's definitely, if you don't get caught, I mean, I guess it's a good business, but unfortunately, I wouldn't be here if they weren't caught. So what they do is they go up to different businesses, and they'll check the glass to see if it's that plexi kind of glass, or if it's regular glass. If it's regular glass, they either use a rock, a crowbar, a sledgehammer, or one of those window breaks, and they just punch the window out, which is what they did over here in Domino's. And they just, and up top, you can see the time. They're in there in and out in three minutes. And that's not even enough time for the alarm companies to call nine-one-one, say, hey, we've got somebody in the Domino's, and then our dispatch to dispatch us. So three minutes is just, like I said, they're in and out. It's not even enough time for anybody really to get there. Domino's has really, really good camera footage. A lot of these places, unfortunately, what you see is blobs, and then they go in the store, and then blobs, and they go out of the store. So as you can see, they're still right there. There's three of them, and they do bring in the Mo's, Ninety-Nine Fashion Nails, Domino's, and Planet's. We got pretty good video from Planet's movie as well. So the Kansas Police Department ended up apprehending five suspects on the twenty-eighth of January. Three of the suspects in their burglaries were able to link to our burglaries. And the city of Marlboro ended up taking out thirty-six warrants for those three people, which are Peter Shepherd, Doron Williams, and Kwame Williams. And these five suspects alone are part of a group that are responsible for over five-hundred burglaries alone throughout the metro Atlanta area. I did write over two-hundred in DeKalb County. It's actually over four-hundred that are in DeKalb County alone. And then again, on the twenty-seventh, we did end up getting hit. That's when Chief said, you know, he's had enough of it. And we used a special operations unit to kind of heavily control for these burglaries that were happening, control the parking lots. We were pulling over cars that, you know, had these temporary tags or no tags on them, which is what were used in the burglaries a lot of the time that we were seeing throughout the metro area and not just Marlboro itself. And Marlboro was actually the only city out of all those cities that the burglar crew did not repeat a burglary after the twenty-seventh, because we had so many people out and about that they were kind of, they left Marlboro alone. Forest Park did get hit really hard, which is, you know, it borders us right there. The bottle shop over there, kind of off Marlboro Road, did get hit. So they kind of stopped there and turned around and went back to Forest Park and didn't even bother Marlboro, even though we have that. Neighborhood Grocery, which is perfect for what they were doing. Where me and Tina, Detective Hendrick, are, we're working nonstop around the clock to try to apprehend the outstanding burglaries. Since the last burglary, we've obtained multiple arrest warrants. We've spent hours and hours interviewing these suspects to try to, you know, get more intel. Detective Hendrick and I were actually the only detectives that the people in custody would speak to. They wouldn't speak to any of the other counties. Detective Hendrick, she's a great interviewer. She's been doing this a lot longer than I have, so they really put a lot of trust in her and trusted her with the information that ended up actually getting more people in custody. We coordinated here and held intelligence meetings for the metro department, so everybody was on the same page. And that was over, like, forty different agencies showed up to those meetings altogether. We've been coordinating with the FBI, Captain Beard's brother, and in attempt to make a RICO case, which is, you know, RICO cases are twenty years period in prison, so there's no probation or parole when it comes to that. So we've really been trying to hit them hard. We're looking for prison time, not really jail time on these cases. We've accompanied multiple agencies during these search warrants. We just had one in Gwinnett where a lot of the clothing, we were able to picture them and match them up to burglaries around the metro area. And we've downloaded and combed through thousands and thousands of phone records and the data and all that stuff to try, you know, pinpoint locations of where these people are certain times. And it's led to, I'm going to say, at least a hundred warrants between the whole group. Just in Newton County alone, I know each one has forty-nine counts of burglaries. That's forty-nine felony counts for each person. And we're monitoring social media, taking pictures, recording, whatever they are recording on their social media, just to kind of, you know, try to get these people in the clothing they're wearing, what they're doing, and all that good stuff. And then I kind of added at the end what you guys, as citizens and business owners, can do to help. If you own a business, please invest in a good camera system. I can't tell you enough how many times either people have said, oh, my cameras don't reach over there, or we look at camera footage, and it's like, it could be a dog or a human, you don't even know, because it's just a blob. You saw Domino's. Domino's has great camera footage. If you invest in your camera footage, that helps our solvability rate go up insane amount. It's really hard for us to solve cases when we don't have video footage or license plate reader cameras don't go over to the areas that they're going over to. Invest in burglar bars as well. Like you saw, they go up, they touch the glass, they just pop the glass, and they're in. Burglar bars are just another obstacle and gives us more time to respond. We want to catch them in the act as much as you want us to catch them in the act, for sure. So as a citizen, if you see something, say something. I don't know how many of you go around the city at four o'clock in the morning, because I don't. But if you do, and you see someone in a parking lot, please call us. If you see anything that's suspicious, go with your gut. Your gut is always going to be right, and we don't mind going out and checking. We'd much rather have you call us and we catch somebody, rather than, you know, we get there and it's over and done with. And this is my contact information, as well as Detective Sergeant Hendrick's contact information. If you want to shoot us an email, if you have any tips for anything, our inboxes are open. Do you have any questions?
I just want to mention that Samuel just came in. He's one of the guys that sacrificed all his hours as well, switched, didn't see his family for thirty-six days. He's one of the people that stepped up in special operations and helped everything out, just joined us a little late, so.
I do want to bring up just a second. One thing real quick, if you have any.
Sure.
All right. Detective Burrell was also very modest. She scoured social media and identified people by something as simple as their underwear. And that's the exact look that I gave when she said, identify the guy by his underwear, until she sent me the picture. And if you saw the picture, you'd understand why he was identified by his underwear. But she friended these people on their Instagram. She would send out emails to all of us that they're in an escalade today and they're leaving right now. She was just, it's amazing what she can do with social media. And she really put it all together for us, and the two detectives are probably very tired. They've been working really, really hard. So she's being very modest as to what she did. She did a cool job.
That's tough. That's a very proactive approach, right? A number of other agencies, obviously, did not. But, you know, in the end, you've got people behind Marlboro that have done a lot of damage. It also kind of tells our community, you know, traditionally, you try to leave a small amount of money in the change box for the next day. Please make those bank deposits. You know, we will assist you to get to the bank. You know, it certainly makes it easier than explaining it to the insurance companies, which may or may not cover, you know, anything. But very good job. Chief, what if you want to, I mean, I'm sure it's what you got. Chief Moss is going to come up.
You got some stuff to do, Jim.
Yes, we're good. Excuse me. Good job.
All right. Good evening, Councilman Hayner. Citizens, thank you for having us. Real quick, you know, we send a daily report to everyone, and you know over the last few weeks how much we go to struggle, and it's been kind of an ongoing struggle with the report system that we have. And that's because we use a version of the state's system. The state allows all departments in the state to use their system for free. A lot of departments pay for a separate system, and we go on a free system. So most of the departments in the state are on the state's system, which tends to bogey down lots of data there. And that's why many times we struggle to get our reports to be done the right way. So Chief went and challenged me to make me look at other systems, even if we were willing to pay for them, and to give us more up-to-time data, you know, some more real-time data, that I found that the system that we have has an add-on piece to it, and we do pay for that. And Chief went to the city manager, and he supported us in helping to do this, so that we get some more data and better data to move forward. And I've been promising you a playlist for a very long time, and what's happened behind that is, is a lot that I've found that to build this out the right way, it's taken me quite some time. There's still one or two little small missing pieces that may be a little bit crazy, but I'm getting there. And so I wanted to show you both about what we have. And then what you can expect to see is I give you a link, gave the city manager a link. I haven't had a chance to look at it too much, but gave him a link. And then also to show you what's available to you. So the data that we can pull is a lot, and it'd be available to you if there's any particular pieces. I'll keep saying, if you want any more data to plug into this, let me know, but this will be a little idea of what we can, we can look at. So this is, this is called continuum. And what I can do in here is I can pull from EMS, and I can pull from fires. So when we have a call that is an EMS call, we report that to the EMS at the state, and we have a fire call, we report that to the fire side. So some of the data pulls differently from each side of that. So what I have up here at the top is an EMS report. And this EMS report is, these are called dashboards, and this pulls the EMS report, and I have a lot of different types, a lot of different types of reports I can pull from over here. But what I pulled was the last twelve months. Okay, so I can pull it by calendar year. I can pull it by a week, by a day. I have all this stuff available to me to pull data from. And then once I hit that refresh, it'll give me a live, up-to-date look. So what you'll see, and when I have your playlist and I get you the URL for it in here, right now, the only way I can do this is print a static piece of it, and the map disappears from, from what I have. The map goes away because it's internet-based and it's interactive. So when, when I get you a real-time link, you can interact with this full-time. So you see right here, running along the line is Seventy-Five in Jonesboro Road. And what all my docs represent is where I'm running calls right now, where my EMS calls are located. And yeah, this is for twelve months, where, and so you start to see as the color goes, my orange are my higher numbers, and that's an area, when I scroll over it, it'll show me that area of where all those calls are located. So some of my bigger numbers would fall into this area, but as I zoom into that, it'll start separating them out to more specific areas. So as I zoom in, I can say, Southlake Mall for the last twelve months has got, we've had run ninety-six EMS calls in and around right there. So anything that falls under that address is at Southlake Mall. If I want to look close in to an intersection for traffic purposes, I can say, you know, that I've run probably seven to fourteen wrecks, and that's just not the, just the accidents, because a lot of times PD will run an accident, and they don't call us if there's no injuries. We don't get the dispatch to that. And so I can go, I can zoom way in on some of these, but you see that as I zoom out, it'll give me an idea of where my busier areas are as I go. You know, the corridor, the Jonesboro corridor is busy, the mall is busy, and as I go down Mount Zion Road, it's busy. But if I go over here, then I can zoom down all the way down to a street level, and it turns into a pin right here, and it'll tell me what incident that was, and I can link into that. Now, if I give this link to other people, you cannot link into that incident report for, for reasons of privacy, especially EMS reports. We have to maintain HIPAA. But the other reports, regular fire reports, would be available to you. And so that gives me a map, but that doesn't tell me a lot until I begin to scroll down. And as I go down, this, I'm going to skip past this, because we know what county we're in, and, and it starts to tell me what types of locations I'm going to. So this little pie chart right here, and I can change the pie chart to do anything that I want to with those. Make it into a bar chart, or a scatter clock, kind of anything. But tells me that most calls that I'm running are private residence or roadway. And then I go around my pie chart, and as I hold it, as I scroll over, it'll tell me how many incidents I've gone to retail buildings, one hundred and seventy-one times that I've been to a, to a structure that was a retail structure, any of that information that I want there. Postal Code County, and I'll skip past that. This gives me my volume by month. So in a rolling twelve-month period, we see that May was a pretty busy time for us. June dropped off pretty significantly. We rose back up through August and September, October, and then generally, I'm seeing by the trends that June, July are busy months, and December is a busy month. Those have been kind of trending as our busiest months on the EMS side. This gives me date of week, and I can change this, and this goes about a week for all the twelve months right here. As we go down, some of our busiest, some of our least busy weeks was right, right between the new year. And again, you can scroll across any of this and pull up that data as you want to, and you'll have a link to do a lot of this. If there's things that you dump one in there, you can send me that to take that out. You know, if there's things that you want to add in, then I can put those in there. This one was one of the things that I found interesting, as I was wanting to learn in this, was the amount of time that we spent on a call. And because a lot of people don't understand, when we go to a call, we run an EMS call, that call expands all the time. We transport the patient, but we wait at the hospital, we clean our trucks up, that we get everything back into service. So you see us on the side of the road for ten minutes, take care of somebody. It's a very expanded time past that, really, that our trucks are busy, you know, crews are busy at the hospital. And so this, as you scroll across, shows you really how long I spent at the hospital waiting to get a room, how long some of my, how long it took me from the time that I was at the hospital to go back into service, and then the entire call itself, so I can see what my, what my timeframes are. And I can dig deeper into that, and I go, and I can use it to say, which hospitals are holding us without giving us a room the longest? You know, is it this hospital, that hospital? And that can, it can point me to say, call the hospital and say, you know, what's going on over there? Why are we having to sit on the wall for so long with units out of service when I need them back over here inside the city? Another charts about how long we're spending on what type of task. Obviously, when we treat, transport somebody by ambulance, that's going to be my longest timeframe. That's going to be the longest time that I'm going to have a crew busy in what we're doing with. And then respiratory calls are the longest calls. There's a lot of times, because we'll treat them on the scene and see if they get better as we're giving them breathing treatments and things like that. Maybe they get better there on scene, and they don't want to go to the hospital. A lot of times, then they, later, they'll decide they want to go. So it's a long time span that we're spending on those scenes as we go. Interesting part, you know, who are we taking care of out there the most? This gives you a breakdown of gender and age range of who we're taking care of the most. Interestingly enough, the highest range is sixty to sixty-nine, and female is the, one of the biggest ones. It's fairly spread even until you get down to your pediatric range. This gives you an idea of who we're taking care of when we're going on the calls. This also breaks down kind of the same thing that the other one did with male versus female. This one tells us how we get paid. Now, this is not 37 and a half percent of the time, so they actually have their insurance and they know, they can present that to us and let us take care of that. And as we go across, you know, Medicaid, Medicare kind of fall into the, the same general number right there to do that. Let me see, I'm going to go down and find anything else that might be interesting. So 477 transports, now that, yeah, that one's pretty accurate right there. But 608 times we took care of patients over 12 months. Some of those no values where, you know, some of the data is not, you know, since we started this, some of the data doesn't line up between what this reads and, and now what we're making the cruise dates. So part of this is maybe not extremely accurate, but it should be in really good shape. Destinations and where they go, I'll show you the different one. But here's where we transported everybody over the last 12 months. You know, we had 334 transports to Southern Regional, 335 to Piedmont Henry, and then we have Grady and Children's Healthcare up there. So that tells us where we're taking them. You know, so we, so primarily we use Grady and outside of Southern Regional, we use Piedmont Henry and Grady probably the most. This breaks me down by unit, how, how many times my units are transported. Now, that's all just one dashboard. And I'm not going to sit here and go through everything, but I'll show you one other dashboard and then I want to show you what you will get. This is the backside, what we will look at. So I can use all my information that I'm pulling here for, I think my fire will start to load up and I'll show you kind of standard. What we can use this for is number one, things we can zone in on some training, like where are we running the most calls? What types of calls are we running the most? Is it stroke, heart attack, trauma? If I see a spike in pediatric, that might make me decide, let's do some pediatric training, but also look at pediatric equipment. You know, are we equipped to take care of these type of calls that we begin to, to deal with and how to deal with that? One spike that you can see on a different board is that our mental health calls have increased quite a bit. And it's like, what is, what is our, it's forced us to take a step back and go, what resources do we have for mental health? Because emergency room is typically going to do a lot with them, you know, and they'll take care of the physical needs, probably refer them somewhere. And as we get, we get some repeats and say, we've tried to look into what kind of resources we have for mental health to do all this stuff in there. So what you just looked at was EMS. This is the fireside, which is a more complete look because fireside will include all our fire calls. The EMS board report that you just looked at was only EMS. So if we have a fire, that would be included in this board right here. And as you can see, all the different things on the side over here that I can take a look at, let me scroll back up here, because we do have a map on that one just as well. You'll see a very similar map, but you'll see higher numbers because this includes grass fires, car fires, house fires, dumpster fires, all those types of things. And again, I can zoom in, I can see where my busy areas are on my map. And it generally forms a bubble that kind of runs from the, the north end of the city down Jonesboro Road, circles out around South Lake Mall and some of the different areas down there and then pieces of Mount Zion Road. So I'm going to skip some of this because some of it is similar. But again, it does, what it does start to do is bring in some of my fire calls and it has a comparison chart on this one of the year-over. So I have 2022, 2023 year-over calls that I'm looking at and how much they made an increase or decrease. Because previous year I had 1463 calls and the year after that I had 1932. Now, one of the reasons we had that big increase was because we were kind of toward COVID and people weren't calling us as much. People didn't want folks in their house, they didn't want to be transported to the hospital. So our call volume was a little bit less here in some of that time while COVID was going on. This tells me that I'm running, out of all the calls that I ran here in this period, obviously the majority of them were EMS calls. Okay, so 1,200 of those. So as you look at the chart here, I'm saying, this was my number of EMS calls over the, over that time period that we were looking at. 39 were fires and then some different service calls, good attempt calls in that right there. This shows me my incident types, obviously, so I can see that for the 12 months I chose and that number will go up and down, but I had 64% EMS calls is what I was dealing with. And then it shows them, my, my next one goes like motor vehicle accident with injuries, assist invalid when we go pick someone up, they're not injured, but they fell in their house and they need help to, to get back up, get into a bed or a chair or something such as that. So, so we've got a breakdown with all of that. Incident types and categories, I'm not going to continue on this, similar, similar things there. When you get a playlist, you will get this one, I was trying to refresh, I just want to point out one thing right here. So, so a lot of times we'll get asked questions about who helps us and who can we help. In other words, our mutual aid partners. So if we have a structured fire here, we need more people than what we have here. Forest Park's the same way. So generally we're running back and forth with Forest Park, Fire Department a lot. So you will see on the list that you will get on the playlist that I've sent from Mayor Council that I can, that you'll see these mutual aid numbers. So there's automatic aid, which we don't practice, which we don't have. And there's just, there's a difference between automatic aid and mutual aid. So you can kind of ignore these columns here and you go to the mutual aid given and mutual aid received. So this one just shows that with Forest Park for the last 12 months, they have come to us 34 times. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me go back. Mutual aid, all right, wait a minute, why is this one not pulling the right way? That we went to Forest Park 34 times, we went to County 7, Forest Park, okay, because there's two different ways that they can document this inside there. There's City Forest Park and there's Forest Park together, so we add those two together as we do. So mutual aid given was 64 times, mutual aid received was 90 times over the last 12 months that they've come here to help us, 64 times we've gone to help them in running those calls. Incident types on the mutual aid calls right there, where they're going to help us and you can see that, again, the majority of that's all EMS calls where they're coming over, sending some ambulants to, to transport someone. And then given and received primarily, it's, it's mostly EMS calls, but we will go help them with the fire or they will come over here and help us with the fire. Sorry if I'm scrolling fast, I know you have more to do. But this goes into, so now another kind of neat thing that I like, this is our heat chart time of day that we're running our calls. And so the darker red it is, the more calls are running during that time period. And look down here at the bottom. So we start getting busier at nine o'clock in the morning, really about 12 o'clock is when it gets busiest and we start, we start slowing down a little bit about 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night and then between, you know, two and seven is probably our slowest period. So just more data to look at right there. Now, property loss, you will get that in your playlist. Property loss means that we have car fire that, that destroyed property or we had a house fire that destroyed property. That's probably two things that you'd see. So in your playlist, when it comes to that says property loss piece, that means we, you know, somebody lost some value. Now, we don't include, we don't include car accidents in there. We just include fire on that piece for the property loss. So if you see, probably, most days you probably don't see that, but if we have, again, a car fire, house fire, something that destroys some property, you would see that in that piece right there. So after that, we go down to casualties. You, you don't want to see anything in casualties because this is only firefighters. Okay, so luckily we've had no firefighter casualties over the last 12 months. And then you start to see this overlapping calls. That one is a little different, I'll explain that real quick because you have that one in your playlist as well. The numbers are generally double the number of calls we ran plus one. It took me a while, I put it in my brain as I talked to them, I said, you have to explain this to me. And he said, when you get dispatch, you have zero overlapping calls. When the next call comes in, you get one overlapping call, but you've already had another one or you had none. And he said, so everything basically doubles up and some of it triple up. Well, basically what this tells you is that during the year last year, 502 times on calls, we had at least one of the calls going on at the same time. 69 times we had at least two calls going on. And then as it goes down like that, it tells you how, how those numbers work out. All right, so that's kind of it with that board. Again, I've got tons of different boards and stuff I can go through, but I'm not going to continue to do that. And I want to show you what you will see from what I'm sending you. This is, this is a playlist and this is the data report that I've been sending you. Now, the thing to understand is that because of the data and on EMS side, because it's so massive in the state, that sometimes these numbers may not match early in the mornings. So if you were to log into this and you go in early in the morning, some numbers from the fireside, their fireside is really accurate, EMS side, it may take it a few hours to catch up. So it's more accurate in the afternoon as we go through. So, so you can have the same, you will have the same controls up here that I have that go on here and you will see the map when it finishes loading. So it just so happens, I told Chief when I got here today, I said, it would just so happen that they only had two calls yesterday. It's not the slowest day we've had in months. But you will see the day before, 24 hours is what you'll see. So they ran two calls yesterday, both of them right here as we zoom in and we can see where these calls occurred right here, okay? And that's what you'll see from that. And then if you have this play button, it'll, it'll switch every 15 seconds or you can use an arrow to go ahead. So what types of calls we ran, both of them were EMS calls. One of them was a big life accident and one of them was a patient that refused treatment and transport. I'll go forward again, this tells you what time of the day it was, that they had one in the 11 o'clock hour and then they had one in the midnight hour for those two calls that they were in yesterday. Usually this is much more populated, it just happens to be that way. This gives you their amount of time that they spent, who went on the calls, made 31, ran both of the calls yesterday. Total response time was about 49. The total same time that they spent working was over an hour and their time to clear was five more minutes past that. No mutual aid yesterday, this is what you'll see, the time's over, no mutual aid right there. And now, again, this is what I've come up overlapping calls, five times yesterday over zero, so there were no overlapping calls. But the reason you see a five is because there were multiple units dispatched to, to the same call. This tells you that they had, we had abdominal pain and a sinkhole episode were the two calls that we had. This graph will change the more that we have. It, it obviously changed the end part of that graph as we go through, who, how many people got transported, it's one thing to know that, so we got one person transported and then one person that refused treatment and transport yesterday. And one person went with the Grady and then this is that property loss that I'm setting up. So your list will be condensed, very small, but if you saw anything in there that you'd like added to it, then you serve me, welcome, tell me, hey, why don't you put this piece in that playlist, I can look at this. So you go in this way by this length of map, we'll be able to be seen. If I take a static shot of the map, background goes away, you just see dots on the page and it'll do that. So the last thing I'll talk about if you have any questions or anything, but the bottom we have in this, again, is about training and really in our, our processes, our process improvement, you know, that we get better at what we're doing the most of. And sometimes we look at really what we do the least of. It is where we need our training because if we're not doing it on a regular basis, that kind of gives us names to train on. Lets us look at our data quality since we've been doing this. It's taken me back to our reports and to say, you know, hey, we're missing some data here, we need to make sure we're plugging in this data. Tells us what kind of equipment we might need, as we talked about earlier. And one thing that's important is our grant, our grant pieces as we, as we need grant information and data to back up this, it's so nice to pull our data from, to apply for grants and then to use it for, you know, your budgeting and planning, any future things, you know, as we're, if we're beginning to see things move up and down, you know, what might we need to plan for in the future. So. Questions? If you have any questions? This night, questions? This night, questions?
No questions.
Mr. Qua?
No questions at all.
Fifteen.
Now, do you have a, I have a question, Tom, between the, the time that you, you get a patient and get them to the hospital, the wait time, whatever happened to that drop and go situation?
So, I was on the committee years ago to worry with this wall time because it had gotten out of control at one time. We would have units, you know, we, we use the term sitting on the wall. So you go in ER and you just say, stand over there and wait. And we would have, we would have units waiting up to three hours, just sitting on the wall waiting three hours because there's nowhere to put the patient. So by law, once we get to, once we get to the hospital's property, the patient is technically belongs to the hospital. Some other directors have said, it's gotten, say, it has gotten so bad, it's better now. But it has gotten so bad, another director for writing protocols into their EMS calls that said, I'm going to give you 30 minutes to get this patient off the stretcher and at that point in time, I tell my crew to go find a bed and they're going to put a patient there and they're going to leave because the patient's technically yours. So what we do by waiting on the wall, there is a bit of courtesy and everybody, you know, that's, that's kind of a common amount of thing. It's like, we're not trying to overload a hospital by just throwing patients inside the walls and saying, there, there, so we stay there and it's a courtesy to them. It's not as bad as it used to be. It used to be a huge complaint about the wall times.
So I'm not upon how you charge the service for the ambulance while you're waiting? Is that charged being charged to the patient or insurance?
No, ma'am. It's, so we have a base charge. In Georgia, we're not allowed to itemize bills. So in other words, if you get the back ambulance and I put a Band-Aid on your hand, unlike the hospital, we can't charge like for a Band-Aid.
When you're waiting?
We have, and there's no time limit. Only, only, the only surcharge is mileage. We charge for the mileage between here where we picked you up and the hospital. And then you get charged, the only, the only increase in charges you get from the face are depending on the type of treatment we did, but it's, but it's in a group. So when you move up to the next tier of billing from a BLS level to ALS level, it depends on how many drugs were administered and what types of drugs were administered. And so it's, it's going to be a combination of more of the two drugs that we're given or it can be one narcotic that we had to give, move you up a billing level in that case, but we don't charge you for every, for every IV stick, for every bag, for all the tubing, for all the Band-Aids. It's not like that, it's all gathered into one bill plus mileage.
So that unit and the staff is out of circulation too?
That's correct, yeah, they just, yeah. And like I said, you know, watching the trends, it has gotten better because every union service in the Atlanta area was just pitching, you know, like you, all the hospitals were the same. The North Park or then wasn't quite as bad, but it, it was to such a point that some services had one person dedicated to go sit with the patient on the walls, they could get a truck like on the road to take care of the cause. But, you know, it was, we did a wall time study many years ago and started it and it just goes on and on as it's, because the EMS, the setup, EMS has no authority over hospitals. Only the hospitals had authority over hospitals, so they can just, you know, so it's a, it's a difficult conversation, but, but everybody that's come into Southern Regional here lately has been doing much better with our wall time, so they needed to increase the staffing. Really, it's the staffing issue in a lot of the places. And Piedmont Henry has done, done much better. And Grady's always been pretty good about getting us all loaded pretty quick, just a longer turnaround, drive-wise, but they usually can get sent out pretty good, pretty quick quick.
Who will be absorbing the cost that for the non-insured?
So for the uninsured, it just, it goes away. And what they do is they will try to go, they'll try to do a collection agency. So it becomes a self-pay thing. And after the self-pay, after they send the bills, after our billing company, we have a separate billing company, our own company does that for us. After they send the bill a couple of times, they'll turn it over to a collection agency. But a lot of these people, they can't locate them, they can't track them down, they don't hear anything. So it's a write-off, basically. Our collection rate for the city, state is between 30 and 40% of what we bill. That's also built in, because they bill the same thing, everybody's, that also builds in the fact that we have, we have automatic write-offs for, for city residents. And so for that piece, so there's automatic piece of that, generally it's, you know, about 40, 50% collection rate on 911 emergency services and EMS. So it's, 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 you know, difficult to glide through some of them, but that really since, since Medicare, Medicaid have, and they're, they're making a lot of efforts at the hospitals, particularly Southern Regional, when somebody goes and they don't have insurance, they do everything, they can't get them enrolled in Medicaid if they're eligible. Whatever they're eligible for, they have workers there, that that's all they do is try to get them into certain systems where they can become a payer and, and, you know, get further care. Because the emergency room only takes you to a certain point. It's usually that extended care that we're missing, you know, three weeks later, they've got the same issue and they're just going to circle back and forth through the emergency room where they don't have long-term care because they don't have insurance. So hospitals are working pretty closely with them on that.
What is our DSO for that?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
DSO, Day of Outstanding for the Bill Turnaround Time?
So, so you're talking about like if we were to take a snapshot right now, I'd have logged into my other system to look at it. And so I don't know what they have on a standard, they'll send you a report.